Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening, I'm not sure if you can hear me, can you hear Jeff Weston?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, great. I'm using my wife's computer in the car on an island in Vermont, so we'll see how it works.
It's coming through pretty good. You can rename yourself temporarily. So that you show up as Jeff.
Right, I don't actually know how to change it, and my preference would be not to, if that's okay, just because it's my wife's computer.
Yeah. So you can see yourself on that, but it would, it's.
It's better if I do, I know.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, it's a public forum and.
Right.
What I could do is I could copy and paste your wife's name onto my minutes document, change your name for the time being, and then before we leave, I can change it back.
Okay, actually, I don't, this is, um, her wife's, my wife's computer is a Mac and I just operate on PCs, so actually, I don't even know how to do that.
Oh, I can do it for you.
Yeah, she's solutions oriented, so.
Okay, great. Thanks so much for helping.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
It's beautiful.
Nathan, did I ask you if that's your kid's art behind you?
Um, no, no, it's, uh, that's not, that's, uh, it is homemade, it's like, uh, from a neighbor in Holyoke.
Huh.
Yeah.
It's cool, I like it.
Thank you.
From what I can see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a little bit, uh, abstract, I guess, I mean, no, I mean, I'm not really a, fluent in art terminology, if you will, but. I like it too.
That's all that matters.
Yeah. So we, we've got a, a thin quorum at this point, huh?
Yeah, yeah, I'm.
Jeff should be coming.
Well, I would certainly think so.
Steve said he wasn't, but then, uh, do we know about, uh, Robert?
I haven't heard. But we'll surely have a quorum, so.
Yeah, we've got it now.
We've got it now.
Thank God for those associate members.
Was anything ever happened at the state legislature on that?
No, actually, I got, thanks for reminding me. This is the time, this is the time we were going to ask them. We wanted to wait till the fall. Um, because they got to file legislation and it didn't matter up until now.
Um, well, there's a pause, I want to say that my internet connection might not be great, I'm sitting outside the, um, Worthing Library in South Hero, Vermont. If it isn't good, I will bring the computer closer to the library door.
You didn't want to drive into Burlington first and get a strong signal?
Thank you, Michael, but I decided to go to the, um, closer location. Though I did call in advance to get the password, just so you know.
I am very impressed. That's great.
You're coming through fine, Jeff. There hasn't been any, uh, any sign of a weak signal or interference or anything like that.
Okay, thanks so much.
Well, my sense is I, I, I should call a meeting to order. Have a quorum, like, I think the first thing we should probably do is just, uh, see if there's any public comment, I, it doesn't look like there's anyone here who isn't here on a particular issue. So, so we, we have as guests, uh, Colin Davis, with whom I've corresponded, who has questions about, about the buildability of a certain piece. Are, are you, are you able to put on screen the parcel map of the piece you're interested in?
Uh, I can try to do that.
Isn't this a recent, NR we did?
Is that coming through?
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, we are interested in buying the 28 acre parcel, I think it's labeled there, 43. I think the actual number in the book is 46, uh, but I've been told that, uh, it is reporting at 43 in the software for some reason right now. Uh, but that's, uh, was all 212 Wendell, and I think that's being broken off into, right now, they're calling it 212B. Uh, and, uh, we, we love Shute's Berry, it seems lovely, and we're interested in moving there, and, uh, you know, we just want to see sort of, if there's any sort of, I don't know, things that people already know about, which would be a reason why we can't, uh, potentially build a house there. And I mean, I know it's not a full proposal and like a layout of exactly what it would do, but we're trying to rule out, you know, anything we can before we commit to buying it.
Yeah, can we build it all?
You know, so, I was hoping Jeff would be here.
I just admitted him, he should be here in a minute.
Beautiful, beautiful. I wonder, does this, um, can this map, uh, show, uh, show frontage numbers and?
Uh, I think I have another map, a survey that was done, uh, that may do that, let me see if I can figure out how to change the window it's sharing.
Beacon, this is, this is, we did, a few months back.
Well, that's, that's, that's more, that's, uh, that's what we need, yeah.
So is this map coming through now?
Yep.
Yeah.
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 I could potentially rotate it if that's helpful.
Sure.
Um, yeah, because it doesn't show the, um, it doesn't show the northbound.
There we go. Is that better?
Yeah.
It's a beautiful lot.
Yeah.
So what's the question here? We're just getting that, we're just, uh, we're just getting the map of the parcel up on screen, Jeff, I think this is a good point for you to join the discussion. And that, this is as far as we've gotten.
When they're inquiring as to whether or not it's, uh, a build of a lot, or if there might be any, uh, issues that would prevent them from building or anything like that.
Yeah, so, uh, we, we had put a, uh, conditional offer on this, uh, property, we'd be interested in, you know, sort of buying it and, uh, building a, uh, house, um, but, you know, we want to sort of rule out if there's any sort of, things that is already known, like, oh, this property can never be built, or, you know, something that would make us say, all right, you know, no matter what proposal we make, that's not going to work, so let's not buy this property and we'll find the next one.
Yeah, like if the property is the only place in the state where a rare endangered frog lives or something, then we probably can't build there.
Yeah, so we'll need to, you know, we're just trying to, sort of figure out what we, we can, uh, before we, we commit.
So I guess I'll ask a question, and then I'm sure Jeff will jump in, but it looks like, on the left-hand side, um, where it says 188, um, point 73 feet, I think that is, um, that's frontage on the road, right? And then on the far, that's on the left, and then on the far right, it's, uh, and there's other frontage, and the, and then it does this weird thing that we did discuss a few meetings ago, where it sort of diverges, um, off the current road, but I'm, I think it was from the old road, so the question, the question is, is there enough frontage?
Uh, the real estate listing had said there was 1,200 feet, I think, um, that may have been including the, the one on Plaza Road there to the side as well. Uh, I think without that, it looks like, I'm just reading, uh, those two, it looks like, uh, it says total frontage 342 and 394, so I'm guessing it would be 600, uh, without the Plaza Road one.
Well, I think the issue is, just to clarify, and I, I don't, I don't remember what the planning board discussed, but you'll see there's that sort of divergent hump.
Yeah.
And so, if I remember, and I think Jeff, you knew, um, that the hump is the former highway. Um, and I think that was, so the question is, where is the parcel go, is, is, um, where it says Peter Gee's, um, in, in the, underneath the little hump, if that's a separate parcel, the question is, is the right-hand side got enough frontage, or the left-hand side, or, Plaza, because it has to be, it can't add up to, um, the required frontage, it has to be contiguous frontage.
Yeah, I can zoom in if that's helpful, by the way.
Yeah, I can do that as well. Jeff, are you following my question?
Yep, it, it may not be that you have frontage on, um, Wendell Road, because of that, um, that strange little, um, quirk. Right. But it appears you have it on Plaza Road, and my map shows, my zoning map of Shute's Berry shows Plaza Road is a town road.
It shows that they have 394 feet of frontage on the left side and 342, uh, feet of frontage on the other side.
Um, well, it would only be the left, it would only be the southerly side of Plaza Road, correct?
No, on, on Wendell Road, uh, they have one section of frontage that's 394 feet, and another section that's 342 feet.
Um, that's to either side of the, um, land that's owned by Peter Gee.
That's, 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 that's what I'm seeing on this, uh, on this diagram, yeah.
Okay, well.
Is it, what's the, what's the frontage, is it 250 feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're good twice.
Yeah, well, Nathan, I, that's, I just wanted to clarify, that's my question, because the number says it's okay, um, it's just what point, you know, there's sort of, the farthest right point, there's the one that's sort of directly underneath total, and then there's one to the left, and so, is where, and then there's the, the point in the middle of the hump, so it's 342, capturing which, there's no arrows to designate the starting end.
All right, so, um, you know, you know, looking at what we have here, right, there's the, uh, you know, you see, you know, Peter Gee's book 1863, right?
Yeah.
That line right above Peter Gee's is Wendell Road, okay?
Yep.
And you see directly above it is a, uh, round dot, that's a steel pin, that's the property. Uh, if you go, you know, left from there, you see there's, you know, uh, south, some numbers, you know, 285 feet, right? That iron pin to the next iron pin is 285 feet, the next iron pin is on Wendell Road.
Oh, good point, okay.
So moving from that to where the, uh, property ends is all along Wendell Road, and there's, uh, two lengths, 205.87 and 188.73 totaling 394 point, uh, 61 feet, uh, and then on the other side, I see 342 feet of frontage, so, uh.
So.
Yeah.
So, probably the planning board, planning board's impression is that you have the frontage in the area, to build a single-family dwelling, uh, I assume that's what you want.
Yeah.
And what you would do is you'd go to the building inspector and file it for a building permit, and he will look at this plan, and he's the final arbiter whether you have adequate frontage in area to build. But we are not the final arbiter of that, we can give you our opinions, but the building inspector is the final. So it, it appears as though he'll have no trouble with it.
Okay, thank you, I'll, I'll talk to him next, I guess.
Yeah, obviously, another thing you want to consider is any, uh, wetlands that may be located on the property and, uh, other things like that, you know, in terms of, you know, whether there's an endangered frog, or a, you know, eastern boxer or anything like that, you know, we can't, yeah, weigh in on that, but.
Yeah, those are other, other agencies and other boards in town.
You could, you could check in with, uh, someone from the Conservation Commission.
I will do so, I may, uh, I think that also on the list, I want to talk to the Historic, uh, Commission, just to double check that.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea.
Okay.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, good luck, thank you.
It is a good town, you're correct.
We're really excited.
Where are you now?
Uh, in Air Massachusetts, uh, it's, uh, up by Groton, not that far from Lowell.
Mark Archibald, Town Planner of Air Massachusetts, you know him?
Don't think so. Not personally, no.
Okay, well, I, I guess not everybody knows Town Planner.
The thank you's gone, Jeff.
There hasn't been much reason to interact in that regard.
Yeah.
We're really looking forward to purchasing a property and owning, uh, the plot and, and not renting anymore.
Most excellent.
Good luck with stuff.
All right, Mr. Chairman, Marcus Forward, please.
There was, um, there was another, another, um, bland question from a, from a fellow named Sean.
Okay, now we can talk again. That was the next in a couple of seconds.
Yeah, so, 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 so is Mr. Shine here? This other fellow had a question about whether you could have two tiny houses on a lot, and, um, but he's not here, so I guess he's not that interested.
Yeah, the, the answer to that is depend.
Say again, Jeff?
The answer to that would be depend.
Exactly, exactly.
And that was, at some point, I know, I had suggested, and Robert was interested in us looking at tiny houses as a, zoning bylaw, but we're not there yet. So we can discuss it.
One thought I had was that if you had a regular lot, why, why couldn't you have, two tiny houses, one, um, you know, one on,
Yeah.
one dependent on the other.
Yeah. Well, tiny houses are often mobile, and, um, look to some people like trailers.
But I was thinking about, uh, two, um, you know, one of them is a, is a house, and the other's an accessory apartment.
Yeah, you can have a regular, single-family dwelling and an accessory apartment.
And they could both be tiny houses.
They could be any size, well, the accessory one has to be less than 800 square feet.
Right.
If the other one could be any size.
Didn't, when we talked about this a couple of years ago, there's also a distant component, right, between, between them? There was someone, I think it was on, um, Baker, who was asking about that.
I think, I think that's still the same inquiry, maybe. I, I think it's from Baker.
Huh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it, it all depends, and, and they need to come before us and.
Yeah, yeah.
Show us their lot, we need to know area, frontage, exactly what they're proposing, yeah.
They're not here, so.
So.
Let's move on to solar bylaw.
Okay, and before we, before we do that, I think, I don't know, Carrie, do you know that Robert joined us for the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Um, so, how about I share my screen, does that work for you all?
Michael, would you mind if I shared mine, because I highlighted a few areas that I wanted to talk about. Same, it's the same thing as you have, except I just put some.
Of course. While you're doing it, I'll just talk for a minute, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Um, so I emailed, um, everybody this last week, and between last meeting and this meeting, I made some adjustments based on what we've talked about, um, there was really three areas of changes. And I don't know, Jeff might have more, but the, the original ones that I identified, uh, which were read, one was the whole conversation about critical natural landscapes, and the waiver provision, and trying to avoid having it be rejected on its face, so that was one. There was language I had a, was instructed to fix about the indigenous, um, notification, which I can give you the background to, but I, I made recommendations, and then the third one, I actually got from someone in the Amherst zoning bylaw committee who pointed something out, uh, would seem pretty reasonable to me, and I just wanted to put it in there since it was a short tweet. So. So Jeff, do you want me, can I talk about the first one, and then we can go to the second one, since that's where you commented? Does that work?
Sure, do you want to share first, and then I'll?
No, 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 I can, I can see it here, so it's totally fine.
Well, it's way down, way down.
No, no, right here, it's five, above your yellow.
Okay.
Yeah, so, this, what was suggested to me, and seemed quite reasonable, it was just a, an oversight, was we, we had agreed that we would, um, have the ability to, Jeff, can you scroll just a smidge, just like, so I can see one more line? The other way. Uh, yeah, perfect, perfect. So we had talked about having environmental monitor that we, if we wanted to, the planning board could designate, um, for significant weather events, and what was suggested to me by the person on the Amherst Solar Bylaw Group was, it would also make sense to have that ability if we wanted to during construction. Um, and that seemed like a no-brainer, um, so it doesn't mandate that we have to do it, or that they have to, um, but that if we want to have an environmental monitor at that point, we can do it at their expense, and that they'll provide reports. Um, so that was that addition, it seemed to me to make sense, but it's open for discussion, obviously, since it wasn't in last month's version. Any, any comments or thoughts?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah. Okay, cool.
Yeah, sounds great to me.
Great, cool, okay, so then we get to the habitat impacts, which is what we discussed at length last time. Um, and Jeff, do you want to go first, do you want me to go first?
Yeah, the, the only thing I was, um, was, uh, not concerned about, I, I just don't think you and I ever really connected, with what I was requesting for this. So there's a great big section down here, too, and I, I, I propose just deleting this, and simply adding this line right here, in front of what we already have, unless a waiver has been approved, and a blah blah blah, large-scale ground map that shall not be located on, and then it lists off all these different.
Uh, you know, we, I, I'm not sure how, maybe it was a, a brain blip, I did get that, maybe I just didn't capture it, but I, I know that we agreed to it, so yeah, I, that makes sense.
Okay, yeah, it, it's just, you know, we don't do this anywhere else in the bylaw, but I just felt that this is such a controversial part, and it's something that somebody could go to and say, oh, you don't allow solar, because this is everything, all these things are, you know, this is the, the totality of your solar district is comprised of, of these different habitat areas, so on its face, you shouldn't allow it, so I thought this would be a good place to really kind of stick the waiver in their face, and say, no, no, you've, um, you know, you, you, you can apply for a waiver here, so that's all I really wanted here. So.
And, and Jeff, the thing, I think is, which you may not have attended, intended, so I just want to double check, the part that you crossed out, which is about, uh, critical natural landscapes, I should, I should, we, we still want to capture that, I should just pull it up and put it into the second.
It, it, it sounded a little redundant of, of some of this stuff right here.
Yeah, I could swish them together, because there, there's, there's definitely, the one thing I, I'll.
It was sounding like, it was sounding like a restatement of that, here.
Well, yeah, when I made them separate, they were sort of parallel construction, but if they're going to be in the same category, under just one, that, uh, the way they currently show up is they're both the same paragraph, so I'll just stick them in the same paragraph, and then I can get rid of some of the redundancy.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, and the thing I just wanted to mention educationally, is there is a biomap three that's in the works, I actually, there was some presentation that, um, the, oh, whoever's running this, is it, uh, I forget what agency does the biomap at the moment, but they did a presentation, they said they've been working on it, it's updated, it more accurately reflects things. Um, it's coming out sometime, you know, this, this year, but you know, who knows what that really, when that'll be, so that's why I changed the language, so that when it hits the streets, this will be appropriate. The interesting thing that they said, and one of the things they wanted to do, is make it more locally relevant, um, so they're gonna both have a higher level information, but also more detailed local information, so I think that'll be helpful to, to us as well as other municipalities, so I can make the change based on what we just discussed, and basically make the core habitat and the critical natural landscape one paragraph, um, like it was, and include the waiver part, which is really the key part. If that makes sense to everybody. And then the last thing, Jeff, do you mind scrolling down to the, the notice part? So, so what we had, what I had last month was, we were requiring, um, notice to tribes that had a cultural connection, in this case, uh, Gopman speaking indigenous people, um, to be noticed, um, and I refer to the Massachusetts, uh, Indian Commission. And I got recommendations, um, from this, our historical commission, that that might be a place. I ran into, and, and the background is, Donna advised us that if you're going to require something like that, you have to be able to point the developer to a list or a reputable source. Um, I tried my hardest to find either governmental or non-governmental sources, so there's, uh, the Mass Indian Commission, there's Bureau of Indian Affairs, there's Mass Historical Commission, and then there's three different indigenous organizations that are national. It might be COVID, because people are working remotely, but I got no information from anybody, no one responded, and so that made me think, given Donna's caution, that you can't require something if you, the people that you're pointing to to be a source are not available, so I downgraded what we were saying from a requirement to an encouragement, basically have it in there that, um, their applicants are encouraged to contact either the Mass Indian Commission or the Mass Historical Commission, so they can notify tribes, but that it's not a requirement. Because, you know, eventually, people will be going back to the office, maybe someone will answer the phone in a timely manner, but, um, it's not reasonable to require that, but it's worth capturing as, as a concept, so that, that was the change that I made. Looks like Mary Lou has a question, if that's okay, Beacon.
Oh, please, thank you.
Yes, hi, hi, Michael, I'm a little, hi, I'm a little, um, I don't know, taken aback by your statement, uh, thinking that it's unreasonable to make that requirement of a developer, um. of a developer. Um, firstly, I understand what you're saying, because it is very difficult to get in touch with any official body these days, because everything's a machine, uh, you know, nobody's there. But I don't think that's your job. I think that you put that in writing, and that's the job of the developer. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I'll just, I'll just respond to that. So, I mean, I did have conversations with Miriam, you know, wearing her hat as the mass, as the Schutzbury Historical Commission, because she was the one who encourages language. And she's actually okay with this. Um, you know, what Donna had suggested and, um, Miriam supplied was a list of all the tribes that should be contacted, and so there's very specific, and those are required. So the applicant has to reach out to this whole list of tribes. Um, it's just the ones that are not specific that have language connectivity to the region. Um, but it doesn't mean that all the tribes listed above this yellow, um, those all have to get contacted, and so those are named. And, and Donna's suggestion was you can name entities that need to be contacted because the developer can go find them and, you know, send them a notice. But for language connectivity and historical affiliation to the area, although it's, um, culturally legitimate, logistically, it's, I, I think encouraging it raises it up to say, we think this is important, but you can't really require it because of having them do the research. Um, and I will say, Mary Lou Miriam started out exactly saying what you were saying. Uh, but I think over the last couple of months or three months, she sort of shifted, um, because we are naming many of the tribes in the area. Um, so it's, it's, the notification is actually more comprehensive than it currently is.
May I say one more thing?
Please.
There's a Massachusetts general law, chapter 114, I believe, section seven, that protects, okay, Native American burial places specifically, which I think should be honored in this case, because we don't know if the stones are representing burial places. So, 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 you know, a lot of people don't know about that. There's a, a law, Massachusetts general law that I, I'm hoping Schutzbury will honor.
Well, I.
Thank, thank you, Michael.
Yeah, well, I'm aware of that. I think the planning board generally has been, it's been mentioned in meetings. This is ma, this requirement here is basically notifying tribes of an intended development. You know, and if something's found, then you know, if it's a matter of law, it'll kick in, and it's, so it's not for the bylaw to quote the law. This is really just saying, we're requiring developers to tell people that this is the intended plan of action in terms of a development. And if, you know, a tribe comes forward and says, we have burial grounds, or we have ceremony landscapes or something, that that's, that's another step, and it depends on what it is, what the step is. So this is really just, all this is about who gets sent to notice. Um, it has nothing to do with the determination of what happens and doesn't outline that whole process. So we just wanted to make sure that the right people were told on the front end, so that there'd be full information going forward. And I, I think this
Yeah.
is, is a, a step up from what we currently have.
Yeah, Michael, I, I, well, first, what we're doing here is unprecedented. We don't require it for any other type of development, Schutzbury, and the list is prodigious. I mean, that's, that's a heck of a list. Um, I, I think we've done our due diligence and more here.
Yeah. So aside from this, there, there's no other changes that have come up from the last meeting. Oh, there's this, sorry. Um, this is Jeff suggested this. I apologize, Jeff. Um, so I added again, when available, biomap three, and then Jeff had pointed out that for the core habitats, uh, the polygons display, it's recommended that there be a scales of one to twenty-five thousand. Um, and so to put that in there as a required document, or in the required documentation list. Am I capturing that correctly, Jeff?
Well, um, you know, al- although I'd love to take credit for different things, um, I don't feel like I could take any credit for this, because I can't remember recommending it to you.
You, well, you pointed it out to me, I guess, and then I was like, oh, this, you know, it's, it's in the requirements, because you remember we had it back and forth about um, using it for regulation or not? It was in that, it was on that page.
I, I remember it came up, and it, it, it was in, it was in some literature or sound description that you talked about, or that talked about usable scales. So, so Mike, I, you know, no matter where this came from, um, I think, I think we're talking about scales that are more that are more accurate, but it, 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 it all depends on what kind of maps, um, these polygons were drawn on. Because it's only as accurate as, as where it was originally drawn. You know, these are not surveys. They're, 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 they're GIS people, the state level, that, that putting these lines, and they do it on maps of a certain scale. And the, I mean, the, the, if, if you're looking for, if this says we want more accuracy, you, you can't really get more accuracy than what the original mapping was.
Yeah, I don't, I, if, if, if you're more comfortable taking that, I'm fine. I actually thought you were the source, so I'm not attached to it at all.
No, I'm, 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 no, I'm, I'm, I'm not the source, and, and I, I, I would say, I would say, take it out, I mean. Yeah.
Done.
Okay, yeah. Because these things, and believe me, I, I, I went to court in Hawaii over something like this. When you draw, um, a line on a map that's, you know, a, a fairly small map, and you draw a, a big line, you know, the, the pen mark on the, on the map might be hundreds of feet wide, when you actually get to the ground. And it's the subject, it can be the subject, if it's, if it's close, it could be the subject of litigation. So I don't think we should mess around with the scale. We need to work with the scales that these are drawn at.
Yeah, I'm totally good with that. Um, so, so just to sum up, there were four changes between last meeting and this meeting. We're getting rid of this one. It sounds like people are okay with the first one about the environmental monitor for construction. Seems like people are okay with downgrading their, the notification requirement in terms of indigenous notification. And then I will combine, um, the core habitat and the critical natural landscapes as they're currently combined, but adding the language about the waiver to reflect that on the front end to avoid of, um, being prohibitive on its face. So those are really the only four changes. So what I wanted to see if the board was okay with, um, I did, Becky told me a couple of weeks ago, and I met with her, um, around the ECAC thing, that the state funding for the school roof has not come through, which means that the town's going to be paying for the roof. So there's definitely going to be a, a fall town meeting to deal with that. I don't have any insight into when that is. I'm assuming it's sometime between October and maybe the end of December or something like that. What I would love to do, if people are comfortable with it, is with these changes made forward into the select board and have them put their eyes on it like they're required, and then try to schedule a public hearing. So, you know, we've got everything in the can as opposed to, you know, if the select board decides they're going to meet October twenty-fifth, all of a sudden we're racing to do a public hearing. So that's what I wanted to put out there and see what people think.
Sounds great, baby.
Oh, Robert, you're muted.
Sounds good, Robert.
Cool. And I assume other people don't have strong feelings? Okay.
I, I, I think it's fine to do it this fall, if, if we've got something that, that we're good with. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to do it tonight, but there, you know, there's some question about the select board's authority when bylaws come from the planning board. And, and to what degree we have to interact with the select board. I know if there's a citizen petition for zoning, it, it goes to the select board, and then the select board sends it to us for a hearing. So anyway, I'm, I'm going to do a little research on exactly what the select board's role is in, uh, a bylaw that comes straight from the planning board, so.
Well, I, I think there, the role of select board is just, since we're asking for the bylaw to go on the warrant, that they have to see it. Um, to say, yes, it can go on the warrant. I think that's the extent of it, um, since they, they own the warrant. Um, I don't think there's any substantive role beyond that.
Yeah, I, I, I have another town that I'm working with that actually, um, denied the planning board the ability to get a zoning bylaw on the warrant. And I'm not sure if they were within their authority to do that, but anyway, it's going to be a little research topic of mine, so.
So.
Oh, I was just wondering, what were the grounds they, they, they cited?
Well, they just didn't favor it.
The select board did not.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't think the select word, oh, the select word basically said it's not going on the warrant.
Huh, right.
Well, I, I sort of don't, I mean, my suggestion, I just, because I want to make sure we don't get s- stuck up against the wall is, I don't anticipate the select board saying that. They definitely can't, I mean, they'd come to a public hearing, but they can't change the content. It would be precedent for Schutzbury if the select board didn't do it, but I'd rather just, you know, up until now, the expectation is you bring to the select board, they look at it, the new person says, why are we looking at it? And then they send it back to us. So it'd be nice to just have that happen. And if for the odd instance they say no, then we can have a subsequent conversation. Just to keep the.
Yeah, but I, I think it's a good idea to know what the story is, too. I mean, because we've always assumed it was simply, simply a formality. I mean, they would just do what we wanted. I mean, it, it, and I agree with you entirely. We've never had trouble, but it would be good to know.
Yeah. Hey, Deacon, you're talking forehead.
Oh, I'm sorry. It might have been better.
Yeah, no, and, and so the other part of that is just, you know, scheduling our hearing. And I was wondering, so I, I'm guessing people might not have gotten there, but I looked at the calendar just to see what our October meeting is, and our October meeting would fall on, um, October tenth, which is Indigenous Peoples' Day, previous Columbus Day, so I'm assuming we're not meeting then. So we probably have to have a substitute meeting date. And if we have that date, maybe we can do the hearing at the beginning of that meeting.
You were, you were saying that, uh?
So that's still a state holiday, whatever it's called.
Yes. It's, it's, I think it's currently Indigenous Peoples' Day in Massachusetts. Um, I don't know if the name got changed, but it was, goes Columbus Day, so it's a state holiday, so we can't meet on October tenth anyway. So I was going to suggest that we do the public hearing at the beginning of our next October meeting, whenever that date is, which we'll have to decide. That makes sense, Deacon?
Well, I was just trying to think that through. You were saying that the, uh, that a fall town meeting would happen after the twenty-fifth of October?
No, 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 I was just using that as a, as a guess. Um, I don't know when, I have no idea when the select board's going to schedule it, but, um, I thought if we do the public hearing, then we followed through on our procedure, and all we have to do is wait for the, the select board to identify a date as opposed to getting caught up behind the eight ball, where, you know, we have to sort of do a public hearing, and maybe we're not meeting enough time, and then we have to do the required noticing. You know, if, if they pick a date that's too tight for the, our public noticing, it gets a little, it can get stressful.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was just, I was just trying to see how firm your dates were, that's all.
Oh.
Or the select board's dates.
Oh, yeah, I don't think they have a date. Uh, I think it's between October and December somewhere, which is, if we knew the date, we could plan a little better, but um, and I haven't gone to select board meetings, so I'm not sure their urgency. But would it? So I, there's a two-part suggestion, Deacon. One is, I think, maybe it's the end of, before the end of the meeting, we should figure out when we're meeting in October, since our next meeting would fall on a holiday. And then my proposal would be, whatever date we do, we have the public hearing for the solar bylaw on that date. That's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, yeah.
Does that work for people? Assuming we all can come up with an alternative date for a meeting.
Uh, that's fine with me. So maybe it would be better to do the third rather than the seventeenth, giving us more time for a public hearing.
I don't know if it.
The, the, the third, the third is tight.
Yeah, because we have to do noticing, Jeff. We have to put it in a newspaper like two successive times.
Okay, okay.
That, that's sort of the problem. You got your built-in span. Deacon, could we do the seventeenth? That gives us enough time, I would think. That's five weeks.
That's a that, that's enough time. I I was a little, I was certainly worried about the third.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think we have to sprint in that regard, just be timely.
Right, so, so I, I, I am reading forty-eight five here, and it, no matter where a zoning ordinance comes from, uh, whether it's individuals or the DBA or planning board, um, it says, the board of selectmen shall, within fourteen days of receipt of such zoning ordinance or bylaw, submit it to the planning board for review. So we do have to go through that process of, of, of shipping it to the select board. Then, then they ship it back to us for review, and during that review, we have a hearing.
Right.
We, we gotta go through some regular, uh, the select board first. That'll take up some time.
Yeah, well, last time, when we did the energy storage and whatever the other ones were, um, in the spring, we did, we decided that we would start the noticing process and send it to the select board at the same time, because the select board's process is shorter. So that I was just mimicking that, as opposed to doing it sequentially, where goes to the select board, they send it back to us, and then next month, we, we plan for the hearing. So and we could push it back a bit.
Right, so, Michael, I would suggest you read carefully section forty-eight, well, chapter forty-eight, section five.
Okay.
That'll, that'll tell you what must be done.
So do, are you saying, Jeff, that you think we can't start the time, the, the clock on the public hearing until we get it back from the select board, which would basically mean October third or October seventeenth, to then start the noticing, which pushes the hearing into November?
As, as, as long as we're confident that the select board's gonna it's gonna act in a reasonable amount of time. It says that the, the board of selectmen shall, within fourteen days of receipt, so within fourteen days of receipt, they need to ship it back to us for review.
Right, so if we send it to them sometime this week, they're going to get it by the first week in October, no matter what.
Yeah.
And then if we hold the, the hearing, say, on the seventeenth, that's still a little more than two weeks after we're supposed to get it back. You that?
Yeah, I, I, I don't think there's much, you, you know, even if the select board was opposed to it, I don't think there's much they can do right now. By law, they have to, when they receive it from us, they've got to, within fourteen days, kick it back to us. So, so that's not gonna, you know, that, even if they don't support it, they can't do anything now. It's when, it's after we've had the, after we've had the hearing, we want it on a warrant. There's some question there.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it, it seems like this silly dance, having watched it a couple of times, where the select board gets the zoning bylaw, and they say, what do we do with this? Do we have to vote? You know, and there's no vote. They just look at it, have it on the minutes that they looked at it, and ships it back to us. Um, it's.
Right.
So. So here in that timeline, I think we could, if we did the seventeenth, and I could make the changes, you know, and send it to the select board, copying Deacon, so he has, you know, he's got final eyes on it. Um, we could do that this week.
Look, I, I don't see what the, I, I can't imagine there'd be, there's a, I don't see what a pro, what problem there would be sending it to the select board this week. I mean, whatever we. I mean, whatever we do following that. I mean, putting their eyes on it isn't gonna. Isn't gonna do us damage.
Right.
Yeah. Agreed. Okay, so that part we got. And Deacon, if you think the seventeenth of October is, gives you and um. Carry a sufficient time to do the noticing. We could play on that.
Yeah, cuz you really. I mean, less than three weeks is is not good.
Yeah. Cool, okay. Um, should should we vote on this? I can make a motion if. We wanna have a vote.
Sure, do it.
Okay. I will move that the planning board um. Send the amendments, the amended version of the zoning bylaw draft. To the select board. By, uh, let's see, what's the end of this week? Long month, by September sixteenth, uh, with a public hearing to be scheduled for October seventeen, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, um, discussion? I'm not hearing anything.
Deacon, are you opening that to the public or the board? Discussion?
Um, you can, you can speak to it if you wish.
Um. Okay, the, I'm I'm stuck on the downgrading of the. Request to contact um indigenous tribes. I'm not sure.
This is not the topic we're talking about now.
Aren't you talking about the solar bylaw? In changing the, amending it?
Yeah, the motions about the dates.
We're talking about dates.
Oh, very good. Sorry.
Um, yeah, any other discussion? Oh, I'll call the roll. Uh, Robert?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Nathan?
Abstain.
Okay, I'm an I. Cares.
Cool. Thank you all for your patience and Jeff, thank you for catching that stuff. Um, I'll CC you what I said to Deacon, just so you can see that it reflects what you intended. Before I sent it to the slideboard.
Yeah, okay, good. Well, um. So. So I I think we're prepared to move on from solar bylaw. I wanted to say, um. Uh, I haven't been doing very well. I'll take responsibility for the minutes not being before the board. I. I haven't been good. I think we need to get back on track, um, reviewing the minutes, um, especially me. Uh, maybe we can schedule another meeting with uh. With Carrie and and work and um. After we've reviewed them is. Are you, are you good with that, Michael?
Totally.
Yeah, so. I mean, I would suggest that 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 we get together, you know, this Thursday or next Tuesday.
That works for me. I'll be in the office both both days.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, I I can do Thursday. Uh, next Tuesday is dubious.
Well, let's shoot for Thursday cuz we we really. I feel bad. Um, we we need to, we need to catch this up.
It's okay.
Can you clarify, Deacon? Are we talking about a uh? The full board meeting or?
No, 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 no. Um, Michael and I have been. Have been helping Carrie review the minutes.
Okay.
And.
What time are we doing? And is it starting at ten or ending at ten?
I get different time.
Yeah.
Oh, goodness. I think I can't do this Thursday. Uh, let's see, Tuesday.
When are we talking about this Thursday, the fifteenth?
Yeah, well, just me, Deacon and Carrie. How about we do it on email so we don't, or stay on at the end of the meeting? And we can, so we don't.
That's fine.
We can figure out a time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
And and.
Oh, just uh, two, two things, uh, Deacon. One, I just wanna note that uh. For the. Meeting uh, minutes for. Uh, eleven eighteen, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
I've got about twenty minutes left of the recording going through.
Right.
So those are, those are, those are coming in hot.
We're gonna get there eventually. I I don't know.
Uh, number two. Elizabeth Fernandez uh has her hand up and seems to be patiently waiting to address the board if it uh pleases the chair.
Okay, please, Elizabeth Fernandez.
Elizabeth Fernandez, O'Brien, sorry.
That's okay. Um, thank you, Nathan. Um, I just wanna ask a clarifying question about the notes. Because I came in. For part of the meeting and I realized that the beginning of the meeting with Colin and Ashley Davis. Was very, very important to my family. And I would like to be able to find out what was said at the meeting, and so I'd like to access the recording if possible, and I don't know how to do that. And even more so, I'd like to, if it's ethically appropriate, I'd love to be able to be in touch with them. So. Is there a way to get the recording?
You can make a request with the town clerk for the recording.
Thank you very much, Nathan. And what is the, what would be an appropriate way to ask to be in touch with Colin and Ashley?
Um, yeah, I don't know, um.
All right.
We could give you our right email address if you'd like.
Oh, they're here.
They're still here.
That's great.
Oh, good.
Hi, Colin and Ashley. I'm Elizabeth. It would be lovely if you have your email address, yes.
Uh, sure, uh, E one V E N at E one V E N dot com.
Is one a number or a spelled out?
Uh, a a number. Um, I think it's Echo one Victor Echo November.
At.
E one V E N dot com again.
Thank you so much. I look forward to being in touch with you and the planning board. Thank you so much for the time. I'm off.
Mary Lou has her hand up.
Okay, it's me again, Michael. This question is directly to you.
Okay.
Did, did you not put forward the solar bylaw amended with the downgrade of the indigenous request? Like, you changed a word from requirement to request. Was that not voted on this evening?
It what? Well. We voted on moving it to the select board. So there's been no, there's no vote about approving. And well, we just discussed.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I.
It was, it was a process vote.
We voted on, we will, we voted on the package.
It it takes me a second to fully comprehend what's happening here.
Yeah.
So you voted on to send the solar bylaw forward to the select board changed. You changed the language, yes or no? Yeah?
Ye- yes, what what we. But Mary Lou, what I would say is, if you put in your calendar, October seventeenth.
Yeah.
That'll be when we're having a public hearing on the substance of the bylaw, and then you can.
Talk more?
Read, yeah, you can reiterate your comments at that point.
Thank you. Very good, thank you.
So Deacon, before we adjourn, I don't know, Jeff, do you want me to share what I saw at the? Retention pond today?
Yeah, I I actually thought that. I thought that Wheelock was on the agenda for tonight. Um.
It was supposed to be. It was, I, that's a, I screwed up. It was supposed to be.
Okay, well, I I don't see anybody from there. Um, so, um. Yeah, I mean, we had a field visit out there unaccompanied. When was it? Last week?
Yeah, the seventh.
And uh, let's see, Deacon, Michael and I from the planning board and Miriam and Beth. Um.
Yeah, and Beth Wilson.
From the Concom.
Yeah.
And we 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 looked at just the areas where. Work is, where where we've requested work be done on the road, the ditching along the road and the basin itself. Cuz uh, uh, from their perspective, that work has been completed. So, um. We took a look at that and then. And then today I got in touch with Joel Walker and asked if a planning board person could go out and. Assess the level of water in the basin versus what we saw last week right after the rainstorm. So, um, I believe Michael has been out there.
Yeah, I went out there today. Can you guys see these pictures?
Well, yeah, they're they're small, but uh.
They're small. Oh, that's too bad. Um, anyway, I went out there today. I would say, Jeff, so this is what it looked like. Um. Last week. Um, and then I took pictures. Today. Um, there's definitely less water. Um, no, I, it, did it rain last night?
Uh, just a little bit.
Yeah, so, you know, I do not have a professional eye on this at all. Um, my sense is there was a little, there was more water than I expected there to be, but there's definitely less water. So, you know, in my uneducated perspective, I'd say. It's holding water and it's filtering the, you know, it's releasing the water over time. Uh, into the ground at some rate cuz there's less water now than there was last week. Um. Whether there's.
Are these all pictures from today or are they from last week?
This one's from today. Oh, I'm, let me see what.
This look, this looks like last week, the the previous bunch.
Oh, hold on. Okay, hold on one sec. I'll change my. I'll stop the sharing. Uh, stop share. There we go. And then I will reshare. Uh. Okay, can you see that?
Yep, that, okay, those are, yeah.
That's today. So.
What were the ones that 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 you showed just before?
They were last week. So just, yeah. So there's more water than I suspected there would be, but you see these weeds coming up? You can't, you couldn't see those last week. So it's definitely lower by, you know, I don't know, six inches or so. Um, but there's, there's still depth. Um, and being that we didn't have a lot of rain in between, I I personally would have expected to be less, but. Um, it it is relatively less.
Was there water in the long narrow section today?
Yeah, yeah, I'll show you, I'll show you that picture. Gotta say, having taken pictures is really pretty handy. Uh. Let's see, um. Let's hear a screen. Uh. Can you see that?
Um, well, these are all just small, uh, small pictures.
How's that?
Okay, can you click on one and enlarge it?
I did, but I guess, oh, I, oh, I know. Hold on one second. Hold on. I got, I know what I'm doing.
Michael, what are you doing?
There, how's that?
There we go.
Okay, I had to open the picture first and then share it. So this is, this is today.
The which way are we looking? Down, we're looking to the north?
We are looking to the north, yes.
Oh, okay, it, now.
And you see at the top where it sort of comes to that point?
Yeah.
Remember there was that sort of dividing space that was sort of shallow? So that's that point, yeah.
Okay, and and what what exists beyond that point?
It's it's deepish. I I might have a picture of that too. Um. Let's see if I have one of those. Uh. Give me one sec. Okay, here, hold on one second. I'll stop sharing and I'll show you that one. Uh. Stop share. Share. This is today.
Okay.
So this was, you know, again, you can, some of the weeds to the left, that little clump of, you know.
Yeah.
Um, growth. You couldn't see it very well last week, so clearly there it's lower, but you know, it's not like there's no water.
Yeah, yeah. So I, you know, I I think what the planning board needs to decide on this thing, I mean, when when this was proposed. The planning board did not make a condition that it be um a retention basin, that it infiltrate all the water to the ground. That's what they. That's what they offered. We're gonna do a retention basin. Um, it's functioning now as sort of a. Part retention basin cuz it does infiltrate some water. Part detention basin because it does have a a siphon overflow that as soon as the water gets up to it, it. Lets water out, so that's what a detention basin does. It it outlets through a pipe. And then it's partially kind of a. Permanent strip of um of water in there. And um, that's the way it's functioning today. Um. Our goal in having the work done was that it would have more capacity. That um, it would infiltrate more, go down more, have more storage in the event of a big storm. Um, so. We don't exactly know how it's gonna perform in a big storm. But the bottom line with any of these basins is they need to keep erosion and sedimentation on their property. And if they deposit sediment on their own property. And don't, and it doesn't go off the property, it doesn't cause flooding or sedimentation. Down gradient off their their own land. It's okay. Um, there's no law against depositing sediment in upland. Uh, you can't get it into a wetland and you and you're not supposed to get it off the property, so. The ultimately, we gotta decide whether this thing is adequate, even though it's not exactly what was proposed. Um, or it's. In 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 big storms, there's gonna be a problem, and I I think we just need to. Watch it in big storms. Go out there, um.
Jeff, do you also want to speak about the lack of um? Rock lining on the side of the road that you noted?
Yeah, we asked them to do ditches and I don't think they really interpreted that exactly. Well, we wanted them to harden the ditches. And it seemed like they thought it meant farther up gradient, way up towards the end where the E S S. Uh, units are. Um, infiltration ditches that would infiltrate water that was coming off the um. Off the slope and keep it off the road. So they did a bunch of ditching up there, quite a bit, that small ditches. Um. But there are places closer to the steep part, closer to the bend in the road. Um, that could use some uh, some rock lining, I think, because. You get a lot of velocity through there, it probably will still pick up sediment. So if they were here tonight, that's what I'd be saying to them.
Yeah.
It it's easier to understand if you've been out there, um.
That's our fearless leader, and this is the ditches to the right, at the very bottom.
Yeah, those are the ditches that. And 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 this is just before the road kind of curves and and goes steeply downhill towards the basin. These are the ditches. This is where the water picks up velocity as the gradient increases. And. This might be an area where they could um harden those ditches with angular stone.
Could you, I just changed screen. Can you see the different screen?
Yep.
This is looking up the road.
Yeah, the. Yeah.
One question I have, Jeff, is can can we just get blanket permission to go up there after storms?
Uh, we can seek it.
I mean, cuz.
I mean, the best thing would be to go. Sort of midway or towards the end of 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 a real storm, just go out there when it's. Going crazy and 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 see how the. The basin is performing. and, and, and see how the, the basin is performing.
Sure.
Just see where it's outletting, what the water looks like, and follow the water down gradient until it gets off the property and just see what it looks like.
Be lots of fun to go out there in the rain and, and check it out. Yeah, it's, it seems like a reasonable thing to do because I think, Jeff, if you're, if we were to say this is not sufficient, that's more work for them. So better to sort of be able to observe it and then make a determination. Um.
Yeah.
Cuz.
Yeah, a- as, as far as I know, other than one incident, when they were building this, one incident that I kind of discovered and alerted the Concom to, um, the, the, the drainage facilities have, have functioned here. Um, there's not been significant erosion. And, you know, you can follow it down through the woods and you can, you know, see if there've been any deposits. And in, in general, it's been, it's been okay. What deposits there have been have been on their own property and have been in upland. So, um, I think so far, it's worked.
Yeah.
Now, we, 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 we got a really enormous storm. Maybe not.
Yeah, we should be able to find out.
Yeah. I, I, I think the road is much better surfaced now. Uh, they, they've hit on something that works very well. Yes, it was a recommendation from their Vermont contractor. Um, and the, and the road is, uh, you know, appears to be pretty solid and, and staying in place. And, and, you know, this whole thing should be a real wake-up call for us in the future. Because, you know, that whole facility has performed pretty darn well in terms of, of not eroding or depositing sediment. It's worked well, except for the road, where they dig in and kind of wreck the forest layer and pull out the organic soil and all the root systems and replace it with fill. That's, that's where all the erosion and sedimentation problems are gonna occur. So we gotta be real careful about these access roads in the future if we approve any more of these.
Yeah.
Good point.
Yeah.
So if, i- if you'd like, I can get back in touch with these guys and, uh, see how they feel about, um, us sending a representative out there during, um, major storms to document.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's good.
Yeah, I would support that. Yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, this before we go and require them to do any more work. Okay, so, I'll, I'll ask about that.
Thank you.
For that.
Great.
It's fortunate, it's a highly secure facility.
I was about to make comment about. I'd like, I'd like to say that even large people can, can, can break their security.
It's, it's secure as long as you don't account for people who crawl on their bellies like reptile.
Right, or the lower gate, which. It was, uh, it was like being a kid. It's good.
Yeah, I, I, I told him we went under the second gate. He didn't seem to be too, he didn't seem to mind that.
Yeah, like, how about walking through the first gate?
Oh, he, he knew we were gonna do that.
You could do that.
Yeah.
If only everybody knew.
All right, so.
Great meeting, Deacon.
Uh, I'm hoping, I, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay, um, I'll call the roll. Nathan?
Aye.
Uh, Jeff?
Aye.
Jeff? See gone?
No, just muted.
Aye.
Okay, um, Michael?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Um, I'm an I. Did I miss anybody?
Robert, did he say?
He did say aye.
Okay.
Yeah.
Second aye.
Aye, aye.
Before we shut down, uh, i- am I correct to assume that the next meeting will be October seventeenth?
I think that's what we're planning on. Um, things could change.
Thank you.
If we get some sort of, uh, paperwork in that requires a response prior to that date, we'd have to meet.
Things come up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to take a second to appreciate Ashley showing up again. It's really nice to have you there.
Absolutely.
Thanks. I'm just observing.
It's great to have you here.
Good, good work with the bylaws. It's really been a cool process to watch. Yeah.
Thanks.
Well, you may be doing a lot more than observing pretty soon. We'll see.
Yeah, we'll see.
Well, thank you all.
Okay.
Good night.
Everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night.
Night.